Gentlemen, are we ready?
You're ready.
Good evening. My name is B.J. Hall. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetlands Commission meeting for the Town of Monroe. It is September 14th, and the time is 7:00. Take a roll call first of the members of the commission staff and staff present during tonight's hybrid meeting. Please answer here or present. Starting with myself, here. Ross, Keith Romano. Tim Stewart.
Here.
Clark Dingus.
Here.
Please note that Clark is remote. Ross Mastrokoko.
Here.
Eric Lindstrom.
Here.
Ryan Kelly.
Here.
And Sarah Stroud, Recording Secretary.
Here.
And Joseph Chapman, Planning Administrator, Zone Enforcement. And Mick Schultz, Town Planner. Very good. Shall we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
For which it stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Before we start, I will read our mission statement, and we'll talk about how the meeting will proceed tonight. The Inland Wetlands' mission statement. The objective and purpose of the Inland Wetland Commission is to provide for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and watercourses with the Town of Monroe. Let's talk about how this meeting will proceed. I see we have a number of people in the audience tonight. Please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, Public Act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title, if applicable, at the outset of each occasion that such a person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body are participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat features are not to be utilized nor considered. They are disabled in this meeting. Now, tonight, we have three public hearings. So I'll talk a little bit about the procedure for a public hearing. Protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission, during which and after which the commission will be asking the applicant questions. I'd like to ask the applicants to keep presentations as concise as possible. The commission will then review comments and other independent comments with the town's town and staff. At that point, the meeting will then be open for public comment. I ask that all comments be made to the chair or to the commission, not directly to the applicant. Comments should be of a general nature, and please keep them concise. We would prefer three minutes or less. It is not necessary that the applicant respond to those questions, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new materials are entered as evidence or testimony during their response. We will initially start with general public participation. This is an opportunity for people in attendance or remote to make comments or ask questions of a general nature, not referring to any applications that are before this commission tonight or to be in the future. So first, I'll ask if anyone present wants to make general comments. Do we have anyone remote to make comments of a general nature? I hear none, so we'll proceed. First public hearing tonight is a continuance. This is IWC 2022 or not. The application is for 912, 918, 926, and 929 Main Street. Construction of a 98,000-square-foot commercial building in the regulated area. This is continued from our last meeting. Do we have someone representing the applicant for 912?
Mr. Chairman, can I just give you the exhibits that we have received?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'll be very quick.
We've already received Exhibit 1, 2, and 3, and those were engineering comments on estimate, revised plans, and environmental report and revisions. The newer exhibits are Exhibits 3, from Jason Edwards', revised plans. Exhibit number 4, engineering comments from Town Engineer Scott.
Shall slide. And that is all, Mr. Chairman. Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. My name is David Bjorklund. I'm JF, and I see us are districted in the state of Connecticut. As the chairman mentioned, this is a continuation from the August 24th meeting. And at that meeting, the commission made several requests for additional information. And I'm going to go over what information has been submitted. If you could give Kevin Fowler. The most of this information is showing up on different points, and I'm just going to go over. Definitely, if you could bring up the site plan. One of the items that was discussed at the last reading was to relocate the septic system.
Can we zoom that a little bit?
Can we zoom that?
Yeah, very good.
And what we've done is we've relocated the septic system to have it 100 feet away from the wetlands. The commission also asked if we would entertain the idea of installing the reserve area when we put in the septic system. And that has been, the plan has been modified to indicate that the reserve area will be installed at the time when the system grows in. Commissioner Romano asked if we could lower the building to the rear. And really, we looked at that, but we can't lower the building much in the rear because we won't have cover and be able to drain those recharged galleries behind the building. It's pretty flat back there. I'm not sure what Commissioner Romano's concern was with lowering the building, but we looked at it, and we really can't do much with that. We did investigate with our clients of the numbers of the property, incorporated conservation easement in the plans, and they're not in favor of a conservation easement at this point in time. This is very speculative. We had a user for the building. We no longer have a user for the building, but they decided, let's go forward permitting, and then see if we can find a user for the building. So the plan, there's a likelihood that the plan could change, and for that reason, we don't want to encumber any of the property with conservation easement at this point in time, because those, they're very difficult, almost impossible to modify. It's not off the table, but until we get a more solid idea of where it is actually going to go on the property. Kevin, if you could bring up the landscape plan. There's a request to freeze the landscape buffer behind the building. And as you can see, we have no planting to be able to behind the building along the edge there, which you can see the plan is modified and added, like a bit of plank to behind the building. The dumbest effort was we're relocated further away from the wetlands. We did, if she wanted, the report from the town engineer. We did respond to the town engineer, and we got back our response letters, I think, on September 7. The other item that the commission asked us to look into, I'm going to turn it over to Steve Danzer, who's our environmental consultant, who is on remotely. He was asked to inspect an area to see if there was possibly wetlands, if there was a depression. The other thing that the commission requested of Steve was that the report wasn't finalized at the August 24th meeting. That report has not been submitted.
And we have that as Exhibit 3.
So Steve, if you want to address the commission.
Thank you. Good evening for the commission. My name is Steve Danzer. I'm a soil scientist, professional wetland scientist with offices in Stanford, Connecticut. I'm going to be brief. I don't have much to say, but at the last meeting, one of the commissioners asked us to verify that there were no wetlands in a certain area. The area of concern was the beginning of the swell on the northern part of the property, the one, Kevin, if you could just like go back to the site plan, I guess, sheet 2 or so. Yes, right there. Yes, that's swell, where the swell starts and then more towards the interior of the site, where the cursor is right now. I went out there, verified that area is uplands. The other item, which is slightly larger ticket item, was I completed my environmental report. I believe it's submitted to the record. I just, I'll call attention, that is dated September 1st, 2021. That is a typo. It should be September 1st, 2022. Other than that, all the information, as far as I know, is current, and all the other dates are current. I apologize for that. And that, that's about it, and I'm here for any questions, or we can move on.
Hey, did you have any further?
No, that concludes the update and the request that the commission made at the last meeting.
Okay. I think that covered all the items that I had on my list. Why don't we start with our remote commissioner, Clark Dingus? Do you have any questions or comments here?
No questions.
Very good. Start down at the end of the podium, Commissioner Kelly. Questions or comments?
Not, not at this time.
No questions for me. Okay. Ross?
I think the landscape plan is great. Thank you. Good choice of plant material. Good sizes, too.
You're good. You're good. Okay. I reviewed that wetlands plan that Stephen Danzer submitted, and I was, I was concerned about the two main findings, Wetland 1 and Wetland 2. Is there any way we could see those on the map there? I just have a comment on that. Mr. Danzer, can you make a comment on? You noted that, first of all, approximately seven acres of upland forest and otherwise wooded habitat will be developed, leading to the elimination of the forest and woodland habitat. And then in Woodland 1, you commented that there was approximately 15.8 acres of the swamp is located on the property with a 630-foot line front. And then we, we saw also the smaller numbers, but the smaller numbers for Wetland 2, roughly a quarter of an acre with a 70-foot channel. But you noted in both of them that there would be elimination of the wildlife habitats and also the recharge discharge for groundwater. Can you just comment on those?
Yes. First of all, regarding the wildlife habitat, it's not wetland habitat that's going to be eliminated, it's upland habitat, basically the habitat that is within the upland review area. Again, when I wrote the report, at that time, the septic system was closer, so that part of the report is no longer current, my understanding, just, I think Mr. Bjorklund just said previously that they moved the septic system back out, but there's parts such as the end of the curbway and technically the swell that are in the buffer, and that's going to obviously displace some of the upland habitat. Regarding the recharge discharge about that, I think I also noted that that will be hopefully mitigated by the swell, which is going to pipe some of the runoff back down into the wetland in that area, as well as the septic system, which does result in recharge into the system, because there's a large building that's going to be utilizing the septic, and that's going to, there's a certain volume of water that, that will be recharged into the system. So you do have to kind of take that, that into consideration. But other than that, yeah, I mean, it's a development, and there's development that's going to be within the upland review area adjacent to wetlands, and it's going to result in removal of trees and paved areas and, and all of that.
Okay. One, one more question. Several places in your report, you talked about the protection that the stone walls that are existing on the property would, would provide. I know it's a little hard to see them here, but in, in what I've seen, they're on three sides, or roughly on three sides of the, the proposed developed area. Can you talk about how those walls will protect things?
Yeah, those, I think the walls, if my memory stands correct, there's one that's right next to the stormwater, the stormwater galleries, and then there's another series that kind of goes so off on a right, right angle that goes towards the east, that is basically looking at this map to the left of the stormwater basin. And those walls are, I mean, they're, they're physical barriers, and if you kind of envision what's going on on one side of the wall, which is a warehouse and then a stormwater basin, they're, they're the type of demarcation feature that normally, you know, we would recommend or an applicant, a commission might ask an applicant to, to actually install something like that in order to clearly demarcate the developed areas and the, the areas that they don't want anyone to disturb. So in this particular case, it makes sense to put the development on one side of the wall, and everything on the other side will hopefully be protected. I mean, they're, they're physical barriers, so. And in the case of this particular landscape with the stormwater basin on the north side, which is looking at the stormwater basin to the left, there's not just one stone wall, but there's actually, if memory serves me correctly, two stone walls that are, that run parallel, the, the other area, the stormwater basin, Kevin. Yeah, up near where the outflow is, that, that whole left side of the basin, there's, I believe there's two stone walls that, that run parallel to, to there. So that, that's, that's all, I think, all that I was trying to, to say.
Okay. Thank you very much. I did have one question that I don't believe got answered about the excavation and fill plans, the amount of excavation.
That was submitted. That is in the package.
Is that in the town engineer comments?
No, it was, I don't think it was in that. I saw it as a, an addendum to, it was provided separately. Saw it in the package. I didn't take the copy.
You say it's about 4,000 yards?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's good. Then we got that covered. But the record reflect?
The monitor is joined us at 7:18. Mr. Romano, do you have any questions, comments on this?
Can you just quickly run down what changed from the last one?
They provided the additional engineering report, the environmental report, that Stephen Danzer was.
But on the plan, so we talked about bringing it level along the back, right? Is that done?
Mr. Bjorklund, that was Keith's question there.
That was, this was the comment regarding if we can lower the building, so.
No, it wasn't the lower, it was to make the grade behind the building flat with, like, gravel, so that if it ever had needed maintenance in the back, it would, it would already be kind of done to get around without.
Right, you know, I mean, it, it's pretty flat back there, and I can't tell.
I can't see if it's because it's kind of cut off.
That comes with, between the building and that, and that contour, that's basically going to be flat. We couldn't, couldn't move lower anything because we would've lost the cover over our stormwater recharge basin there, but there.
It wasn't, that's not what I meant. I'll, I'll just mention my comment again, and then is that in the back of the building, there's a grain line. I can't see it, but it's maybe 15 feet off. So my, my idea was, for future maintenance purposes, if you made that filled with gravel, kind of soil, no, what you have there, but fill it with gravel now, so that if you ever have to do maintenance on the back of the building, you know, your equipment's not getting stuck or anything, you don't have to come back if you have to do any work, earthwork, and then you might just have to step the footing down a little bit lower in that area to get frost coverage. That's all I meant by.
Right, well, there's, that's the contour line back there is 440, and that's about 12 feet off the back of the building.
The building is a 442.
Yeah.
So it's two, two and a quarter feet over 12.
Well, that's the, I mean, we could have an exposed wall there with gravel.
That is my suggestion, as a kind of like, you know, never have to worry about it in the future.
Yeah, you know, there will be.
Yeah, but if it's scrubbing, assuming it's.
There'll be man doors back there, you know, when they finally get to the, the requirement. He goes, so we can grade that 2% and just buy it into the building. There'll just be some more concrete.
Right, and just gravel or whatever you want to put there, so it doesn't, you know, the.
Gravel will be the problem, since this whole site is gravel.
Okay. They moved, the developers can move?
Yes.
And the septic moved also, right? Septic moved back?
It moved also.
Any other questions? No. Any other questions from other commissioners? No questions. No questions. Ask for a motion?
Take a motion, move this application to deliberation.
Second?
My second.
It's a public.
It's okay.
Yes, apologies. Back up two steps. I want to open this up for public comment. Anyone in the room here that has comment? Anyone remote with comment on this application? I hear nothing. So we had a motion and a second to move to deliberation. Vote?
Hi.
Hi. Very good. Okay, we'll move that to deliberation. Next public hearing, IWC 2022-12, 754 Main Street. Proposed construction of outdoor storage in the regulated areas.
Mr. Chairman, I'll read the legal notice.
Yes.
And go over the exhibits that have been provided. Inland Wetlands Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held on September 14th, 2022. In accordance with Connecticut General Statute 8-7D, a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, September 14th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. To consider the following. Seven, Inland Wetlands Commission Application 2022-12, 754 Main Street. Proposed construction of outdoor storage in the regulated area. And the exhibits, Mr. Chairman, that have been provided. Exhibit number one, application submittal, and number two, return of certified mailings.
Aquarian and DPH notifications and the others.
And Exhibit 3 is the Aquarian, Aquarian notification.
Good evening.
You may proceed.
Evening. My name is Mike Ross Byrne, and I'm a associate senior in the state of Connecticut, in the engineering offices here in Monroe at 501 Main Street. Can I share the screen? This is.
Eric, have you done the shot? I'm having difficulty with not going back. Go back to me as the host.
You close out of that. If you do share content.
Yeah, this participancy, I have to get it back. See the tree? Laced hand pen.
There you go. It's now if you share. Now if you hit share content.
Yeah, I gotta get back to me. See this? I gotta get that back.
Do I have to do anything on that computer first?
Just trying to get married. Take, present there.
Yeah, but I, I made them the host, pepper, so.
You made?
The previous speaker, the host.
Is that the speaker? Screen share.
See right here. It's got to go back to me.
Hit clean host.
There you go.
Do you have a password or something you have to put in?
I put the six digit.
It might be on this computer.
I've never had to do that, that's why it's throwing me for loop. Not on there. See, I want to get back to the video, see. It's right here. I pinned that one.
I think we're seeing out.
Thinking.
Yeah, but I, I don't have a host key. Do you have a, do you have a? Is anyone at your office that can? Indian House Speaker. That's a tap.
Currently the host is just who's ever connected.
Well, we're, we're the host, you know, me.
You have this button, did you have one that didn't share?
Oh, Ryan. Ryan, this is Rick, I'm meeting. Trying to try to get back into being the host. I did it, I shared it.
That's not.
And now I want to go back to making me the host and see. And it's asking me for a ten digit.
I mean, it's the host. Kevin Fowler may be the one receiving.
He may have to give.
Maybe the one that has that code popping up on his.
Yes.
Does the, does the host that he asked to? Screen share.
Yeah.
And Dave, is there anything on his end that he's got to do? To disengage?
You give him permission and then you take it away.
Yeah, he's asking for a ten, a ten digit number. And that's.
Yeah.
I'm talking to I T right now. This is the first time this has happened. So I'm the host, I transferred it to a remote party. And now I'm trying to get back as the host. Yeah, Ryan, this is I T, he's trying to get us back.
Being controlled by Ryan Daley. Ryan Daley.
Yeah. And that's why I have the I T number. This is like the fifth time I have a call, you know, there's always something that happens.
I mean, Kevin Fowler is the one who's. Kevin Fowler is a digit.
This is Kevin Fowler, I'm here, uh, I don't see anything to like give you control back.
Okay, it's not, there's not a code, a, a six to ten digit code that keeps popping up on your screen?
No, there's not.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
I'm plugging it, plug it back in.
This is the first time I've ever seen this occur, because I, I do this all the time.
Start over again. They shut that up, turn it off, turn it back.
Is there any way you can disable it and reboot it?
Hey, this is Kevin Fowler again, uh, try that, I think I just found the option.
Try that again, Rick.
Yes.
Connect and then reconnect? Drop out of the meeting and come back?
Thing is, if he's the host, so I don't know if that will disrupt the meeting.
Okay.
It sounds like he may have found a way to give it back.
Okay.
You're sharing. Gives it back.
Thank you. Believe it or not, I T has confirmed it, uh, what he, he did something to return it back. He either did it inadvertently or he figured it out.
Kevin did.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kevin.
Kevin.
Okay.
Good evening. Again, this is the first time for me, I know.
Um, so again, for the record, I'm Mary Glashard, uh, here, um, behalf of the owner and applicant, Steve Singler with Stone Farm, and we have an application for outdoor storage within upland review area. And just to give you some background, Stone Farm is a business, they source, um, reclaimed granite materials from like old buildings and bridges, surveying that sort of thing, and then resell it. This is the, this is example for Main Street, that's the location of their headquarters and their office and their whole operation. Right on Main Street. So this is the entire site, um, the building there is their office and they have some warehouse. And he moved back about seven years ago, he moved into this site, uh, back in twenty sixteen, and his business has grown and he needs more area to store these granite blocks and natural holders. So here I've overlaid the wetlands that are on the site and the upland review area, the hundred foot upland review area. And this was flagged back in twenty sixteen, we had it flagged again, uh, in May by J M F Wetland. This just kind of zoomed in so you can see more of the area we're talking about in the hatch area of the existing pavement is the existing outdoors, approved outdoor storage.
Repeat that again? Repeat the last part again?
So this is the, um, existing approved outdoor storage area, kind of in that gray hatch area on the pavement in the back.
Where can you show it?
Light blue line?
Right there, just.
Yes.
Oh, those little pieces, okay.
Okay.
So there's going to be different types of outdoor storage, it's not kind of your typical, what you're thinking of when you think of outdoor storage. One area that we're proposing is on existing paved areas in the driveway and the parking. The site was overparked, I think there was a hundred and six parking spaces, but sixty-three are required, uh, and so we're taking away some of the parkers, but we're still overparked by ten spaces, so this is. So these yellow areas, you see outlined, would be the proposed outdoor storage on the existing driveway. And we've run a truck turning to make sure that the, the trucks can still, there's a loading dock at the back here, this is an old area from before he moved in, but we've run the truck turning to make sure that trucks can still move and receive. Other areas that we'd like to do outdoor storage are more like informal, um, they're at existing meadow and grass areas, and they're outlined in pink here and here. And these, so the whole area wouldn't be storage, they're more fluid, um, he'd just be bringing in those folders and those granite blocks and like placing them, so there wouldn't be kind of access aisles, it wouldn't be like rows of pallets or anything. And that area would remain meadow, we wouldn't propose any millings or gravel surface, he would just be placing them on the existing grass field area. As a secondary storage, kind of in the future, as he continues to grow, he'd like to store in this green, uh, wide area, and that is currently wooded, we'd like to keep the trees there and kind of store these folders like in and amongst the trees. So again, no, no grading, no clearing. The next area would be off of the driveway here to the south, and this would be, uh, proposed millings, and that would be for storage, like your more typical pallets, um, on a milling base. We would propose, um, holders fifty feet on center to mark the limits of all of these areas, and then there would be basins proposed here, here, and here. Basins would just after any runoff before it then goes to the wetlands, um, for treatment. Uh, and that's really the limit of the grading is the basins and maybe here. And then there'd be, this area is lawn and it's pretty flat where the millions are proposed, so it'd be very slight grading in this area.
Is that a paved area now? You were just showing, is that a paved area?
No, this is lawn.
Okay.
And it does get a little, let, you know, it'd be, you know, sort of, not any kind of erosion, uh, and skate lines in that area. And then I just have some photos, some of the, one of the materials, um, that are typically reclaimed and that would be stored, some would be on pallets, some would just be based on the grass. The total proposed. It'd be even the I one district, forty percent of the lot area, um, by right, we use as outdoor storage, uh, we're proposing fifteen percent, and with the five percent that he is already using, that would be a total of twenty percent of the lot area that he would want to propose for outdoor storage. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Hold on. Is there any current aerial pictures?
Uh, Google didn't have an updated one, no. The wetlands limits were roughly the same.
Picture of what's going on on the site, you said, you showed us a picture of it seven years ago before he started his business. Now it's seven years later and he's saying he's blowing out the area.
Well, yeah, he'd like to.
For us to see what's going on now.
Yeah.
Versus from seven years.
Yeah, it's grown over the years and he's, you know, getting more jobs where he's sourcing these reclaimed materials and needs additional space, bring those in and store them before it's done.
What's the distance between the, the two tips of those wetlands at the top?
So the setback is fifty feet, so I'd say probably fifty, sixty. Right, this distance is fifty feet right here, so, yeah, it's probably about this maybe a little bit more.
According to your application, it's, there's two point eight acres in the upland review area. And would that be those two, the two?
So this turquoise line is the upland review area, uh, you can actually.
Yeah, that's easier to see.
Yes, this is the whole thing, but he's not proposing any changes in, in this area, so we had to zoom in on this. With the blue is the wetlands and then the turquoise is the hundred foot upland review line to the offset.
Okay, uh, should we start with, uh, Mr. Gingras? Any questions?
Um, not right now, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to picture, because the picture doesn't show any moderns, you know, what's going on there, so I'm really trying to picture where they're going to put these little, uh, park, you know, the little storage areas. I need a better picture of, you know, something going on now.
Yes, all this paving is still maintained except this part of the paved area, uh, and they're moved with the last application and that became, um, planted. But the limits of the existing paving area are, um, still intact today, but that hasn't changed for this area.
And those are all in upland review area at this?
Yeah, that was all existing.
Okay.
Okay, no question.
Yeah, the only additional paving being proposed is millings in this area, which is currently lawn and wooded.
Do we have to, do we have to use millings?
So gravel, like, isn't, um, permitted for outdoor storage, but millings are, um, you know, we did consider some other alternatives like for grass or for, um, tavers.
What are you doing? I wanted to make a comment about that exactly also, um, the, um, have you done any testing to see how much the layer of organics is, uh, on that area you want to put?
Uh, no, we have not.
Because I don't see why, you could have just figured off a bankwood gravel, natural gravel from anywhere in town, you know, anywhere solid sells it.
Yeah, I don't think you'd be opposed to gravel either.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be processed gravel, but it could be, you know, bankwood good draining soil, so millings always ends up making a mess, especially close to wetlands, in my opinion. Um, I'm looking at a picture right now, it almost looks like, uh, up above the building to the right with two wetlands fingers, almost looks like there's a brook right there in between those two wetlands, so, areas.
No, I believe the church that was there before was.
No, which the brook, I don't know if it's the brook or it's just the low area that connects the two of the store, but it's pretty, it looks like it's lined with rocks.
I think he may have put folders there, um, as part of the last application, um, kind of as a limit of the disturbance area. We did have the wetlands flagged again in May.
Yeah, this reflects the flagging from May.
Yes.
May of twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, it may have this year.
The other thing is, uh, the area over there in the trees that you're talking about?
Yes, and the greens.
That's kind of like, that's an unusual, um, application, because I think we got to kind of see what you're talking about there, because, you know, you're saying you're not clearing any trees, but, you know, equipment that picks up five and fifteen ton pieces of stone don't really fall in between trees very well.
Yeah.
So we don't want.
It wouldn't be the whole area, which is kind of, I guess.
The area, it looks like it's a few acres.
Yeah.
So the outside limits of it, close to the wetlands, you got to have some kind of path to move stones, not do it by hand, so. I don't know, I kind of have a feeling that we should, we should see what's going, like get a better explanation maybe in person.
It's second isn't?
Yeah. It's not, if you were saying you were clearing it, like, that would be one thing, because you know that you're going in to clear it, which would be pretty aggressive.
Yeah.
All that wetlands.
Have to clear all that.
If you start, you know, if you start banging into trees and killing them and not come over, end up cutting down anyways because they're dead, in five, six years, it's cleared.
And I, yeah, I mean, he does, he likes the land in the site and that was one of the reasons he moved here, and the materials he's selling are holders and he was more just like store them in like their natural habitat, um, not a natural habitat, but not to have them just like on pallets lined up, to kind of have them in more of like a wooded meadow area.
I think that's admirable, now we just need to make sure that they can be handled, moved in and out properly.
Right.
That they, they don't cause additional damage. The pictures you showed us, so I, we can get, I think, an idea of what he's trying to do. Uh, let's go down, uh.
Eric, Mr. Kelly, can you just, again, describe?
Mayor, Mr. Kelly, can you just again describe that is kind of spaced this two, uh, purple outlines?
So.
Can you describe what that's gonna be?
It's like an existing grass meadow, like non-maintained lawn area. Um, so the, those would just be stored either on pallets or just on the lawn, kind of as you see here in that area.
So it would not be quartered off at all in any way. It would just be a space that he would be.
Yeah, because he gets different materials and different sized materials and they come in and then he sells them. It's kind of always fluid as to what type and size of materials he's getting. So, um, it's not like we can say like a four by four pallet and we're going to roll those. So that was mainly of why we just said this area, even though that whole area is not going to be stacked storage. It's just going to be accessways.
I'm curious, I'm just curious about the proximity and in particular that little knob down at the bottom to the, the two wetlands there. Like why is that, could that just be cut off, not made a part of that space?
Potentially, we do have a proposed basin, um, here. Just with all the stone products, um, and with, you know, vehicles driving in or like a fork driving in forklifts. We did, um, run calculations, you know, we said lawn was, we would announce this was good condition lawn and assume that it would be, you know, air condition. Uh, once all these holders and equipments going in and out. And then we did provide basins, uh, to, you know, to make that runoff based on the change in, in what the lawn area would be.
Another question, um, what type of vehicles will, will be driving back there as far as, you know, delivery or?
Sort of like mophits and forklifts. Um, would, they would offload the, uh, the trucks come in, there's a loading dock here to go inside. And then they can pull up along the side here and offload, uh, and this probably like more of a staging rather than a storage area. And then the mophits would bring, um, all these holders, um, back here on the pallets.
And that'll be stable enough just on a grass?
Yeah. Probably in the spring, like probably not going to go in as often. Um, but that's part of the design of having the millings to the south, that more stabilized area as well. Obviously, it's, it'd be cost imperative to, to do like millings or gravel in all of these areas. So he wants, you know, some options and accounting for growth in the future, not going to fill up all this area right away.
I thought trees, variety of trees are in that area by the upper right.
Question, it is a mature wooded area, which would get you, uh, an existing conditions survey of what's out there.
Um, I pulled up an aerial photo, it looks like there's a lot of stuff in those areas now.
The parking, I know he's.
No, in the area, the, the upper area, it looks like he's got, I mean, I don't know if this is a new photo, but I assume it looks like white, white piles of rocks, looks like he's trying to spell help with them or something. And it's, it's not lawn.
Google Maps?
It is. Well, I'm using the map, the map on my iPhone and I just turned on the aerial photo. And it's not lawn, it's dirt or millings. And, and it seems like he's filled, filled stuff in all these areas that you're proposing to put stuff. So is, is that, is, is that the case? This is, this is a, you know, something he's already doing?
Um, I don't believe so. He may have started in here. I know he was, um, using this as like a staging area and some of the pictures were in this, like in its island. I know this is still lawn and, um, wooded.
I mean, that area, the, the area down below where you talk about the millings, I don't know, that looks like it's already, it's, it's either mud or it's millings. I can't tell, but I think we need a site walk to take a look at what's really going on. I don't have a problem with outdoor storage at this degree. I don't think I would support, um, storing it in the woods because one of the big problems with, with that would be, um, you're, you're driving over the tree roots, so you're eventually going to come pack the tree roots and kill the trees. So, um, without some, without some, you know, real plan on how he's getting in and, and, and a strip of area. But I think that over time, he's just going to back and forth over the, over the tree roots and, and staying away from the trees. He'll, he'll, might as well just cut them down.
Okay, I think, I think we're in agreement, at least three of us here, that a site visit is a necessity here.
Chairman, can I add? Uh, the town engineer has not provided a report.
Okay.
The town engineer was hoping that the applicant would clarify a lot of these issues. He was hoping that you would do a site block to clarify this issue. I expect to the applicant, graphically, the plans are very confusing. He'll add the details and all of the members have expressed that. So the applicant is aware of that and he just recommended that he continue the public hearing.
I agree that we should continue it until we can do a site walk and see a, a more detailed plan on how the equipment would move into those areas.
Okay.
I think that.
I'm sorry, what are you doing? I also think that you should have, as the presenting for the applicant, the property owner, you should have a better understanding of what the conditions are today. And a seven-year-old picture and then us finding on our phones that it doesn't look anything like that. And you're saying, you know, you haven't even been there to look at it to know what's there.
I have been out, so I know that, um, the lawn area is not being used for storage.
Yeah.
And that.
You're showing us these little gray areas, right?
Right.
That obviously through these pictures are way extensive more than that. So you're showing us something that's not very accurate, in, in my opinion. Unless we go out there and, you know, these pictures, all the stuff that's in these photos are now gone. But there's a ton of material in the picture I'm looking at, like hundreds of pallets.
Well, I think that's why we need that. I think we should continue this hearing at this point and the, you'll arrange for a site visit.
Right, and, and that, and that map would be entitled is existing conditions map.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, get the more detail. And then also a plan for, for how the equipment would move through those areas and, uh, I, I keep looking at this and thinking about TLC nursery next door.
Yes.
Very close and the amount of mud and mess you have there. And it's easy to kind of project that onto here moving a pavement.
Yeah, and I'd personally rather see him, um, it's certainly from, and I don't know how much is there, but the aerial photo has a certain amount of, I, I'd rather see him condense the, the stuff rather than, than spread it out. I hate to give him so much outdoor storage that he could, that he could sprawl and, and driving around all the grass gets, is, you know, driving on grass, it's going to turn into paths, it's going to turn into mud. You know, if he were to say, I want, I can get it all into this smaller area and we can put gravel or something down and then, and then, and then really, really work to, to keep it compressed.
Could be more efficient though. He's got a, he's got an area the size of his room and everything is packed in. How does he get this stuff?
No, I understand, I understand that, but, but if you look at.
It's like nursery stock, you're going to have to move a little piece here and there to get to the one in the back.
Right, I mean, how often do you sell these things too? I'm assuming you've got some weird shaped things, it might sit there for years. So you have, so someone walks back, I like that, you move five things and you pull it out.
From all the, all the stuff that I've been exposed to in my life with this kind of material, most of these operations run like a seven, four-yard wheel loader, right? And that's not going to have any issues on the soils around that site. They're not going to get stuck, you know, unless it's like deep, deep mud. Uh, uh, a mophit or a, or forklift, every time it rains, they're going to be.
It's not going to move.
Yeah.
They're going to be F O L.
I know he has that on the pavement, but.
Right, but I'm saying, you've been in the area that you're talking about during, uh, you know, a larger wheel loader is going to basically just drive over public, it's not so easy to see it. You know, in my mind, it's that, you know, if it comes off, it's being spongy and everything, it doesn't matter what you have. You're all those areas, I mean, it's a transportation nightmare. You know, so, right, I'm going to be granting him, call this a permission and then he comes back and says, well, he gave you some pressure, but the soils are no good to drive on. Now we got to rip it all out and put it all, you know, millings or gravel or whatever.
Yeah, I think, I think looking at it ourselves, uh, is the best solution here. Understanding those spaces, up-to-date photographs. So let's continue this hearing after we have a site visit and we'll be rescheduled.
Thanks.
All right. Third public hearing tonight. Turkey Roost. Okay, I W C. Are you refusing yourself also?
No, I'm just putting my, this, this.
Oh, there you go, okay. I W C twenty twenty-two dash thirteen, one forty-one and two oh one, Turkey Roost Road. Construction of ninety single-family detached dwellings served by fifty-five hundred and seventy feet of new roadway. Consider this hearing to be open and I want to make a few comments to.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Chairman, I need to read.
Give me the materials.
I need to read the legal and, uh, provide information on the exhibits.
Very good.
Inland Wetlands Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice a public hearing to be held September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, I'll just get right to the application. I W C dash twenty twenty-two dash thirteen, one forty-one and two oh one, Turkey Roost Road. Construction of ninety single-family detached dwellings served by five thousand five hundred and seventy linear feet of road. Uh, said, uh, legal was posted twice on, uh, August thirty-first and November, excuse me, September seventh. Exhibits include, one, application submission, two, return of receipt of certified letters, three, notification from Southwest Conservation District of receipt of application for review and report and letter from Ryan and Autumn Shepherd, which reads to the commission, dear commission, my name is Ryan Shepherd, my wife Autumn and I live at thirty-nine Pinto Lane in Monroe. Recently, we became aware of the proposed project, a Turkey Roost Road for ninety homes. I am writing to express my concern over the project. First, and admittedly selfish, the project is anticipated to approach close to the back of our property and our neighbors' properties. All of us on the street have young children into this neighborhood for tranquility. The addition of ninety compacted homes backing up to our property is less than appealing and would drive down property values in our area. Not to mention the nuisance the building of ninety homes and infrastructure will cause. Secondly, this is heavily traffic area for wildlife, deer, bear, squirrel, et cetera. In addition, we have witnessed several eagles in the area. Thirdly, the area is dense with wetlands. There is a small pond near our home that houses all sorts of wildlife. There is a stream that runs through the wooded area as well. I am not a wildlife or wetlands expert, but I think this is important to the area. Fourth, these homes will have septic, I suspect this does our neighborhood. Near concern over septic tank leaks in this area that can fail and seep into wetlands. I realize there's nothing we can do to stop the project, but we wanted to pass on our concerns. Sincerely, Ryan and Autumn Shepherd. That concludes the exhibits, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Let me give just a little more detail about the application before we continue in this hearing. The project site is a hundred and six point two acres consisting of the two parcels, one forty-one and two oh one, Turkey Roost Road. Two oh one Turkey Roost Road is located within the multi-family residence district or M F D. And one forty-one Turkey Roost Road is located within an R F two district, meaning two acre zoning. All homes in this planned development will be served by a central wastewater pretreatment facility that is part of the application. Quarry Ridge application was originally, previously approved by the I W C in twenty ten, but the applicant allowed the approval to lapse. On August twenty-fourth, the I W C determined the project became significant activities and scheduled the public hearing, which we're starting this evening. On September fourteenth, I'm letting everyone know that we have referred this application to the Southwest Conservation District for review and report. And I believe that part of the entry was that Conservation District has acknowledged.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, okay. And the commission, pursuant to section seven dot six F of its regulations, I'd like to read those before I ask for a motion. At the discretion of the commission or its agent, when the proposed activity involves a significant activity, additional information based on the nature and anticipated effects of the activity may be required. And underneath that, there is a long list of requirements. F in this list states, an environmental impact study by an appropriate professional, included but not limited to the following. A description of the ecological communities and functions and value of the wetlands and water courses involved in the application. Effects of the proposed activities on these communities and wetland functions. A narrative of how the applicant will change, diminish, or enhance the ecological communities and functions and values of the wetlands or water courses involved in the application. Any alternative which may cause less or no environmental impact for wetlands or water courses. And a description of why each alternative considered is deemed feasible or not prudent. We are asking the Southwest Conservation District to provide an assessment, but I will ask for a motion pursuant to the regulations of seven dot six F that we determine by a majority vote whether the applicant will be required to take this environmental impact study. So I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. And how do we vote? We need a voice vote individually on this, or we'll just?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I recommend a roll call vote.
Roll call, okay. Let's start with Clark Gingras remote. Clark, how do you vote on this?
Aye.
All right, Ryan Kelly?
Aye.
Eric Lindstrom?
Aye.
Ross Masurakoko?
Aye.
And Jim Stewart?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. We require now that the, uh, the environmental study and the engagement of a consultant to determine the results of that study. So we ask that the applicant advise the I W C of their intent on funding tonight or at the next meeting, the funding of that study and that consultant. As an applicant, you have the right to withdraw your application if you choose to. In the event that you choose not to fund the impact study or proceed with the application, the commission will deem the application incomplete and deny the application.
Mr. Chairman, David Bjorklund, the engineer for the applicant, uh, we've agreed to, uh, to fund the study.
Okay. The details of that funding can be worked out with the planning department. But since you have agreed to that, we can begin with your presentation and, uh, followed by a public comment. So if you want to move ahead to present this to us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is David Bjorklund, J Edwards and Associates. Or could you give, yeah? As the chairman stated, uh, this development was, uh, started back in oh two. The approval process, uh, it was approved, uh, conceptually by the Planning and Zoning Commission uh, in the early two thousands, uh, because the, uh, the town change was granted. And, uh, then we proceeded, uh, in two thousand and ten to obtain the approval of the inland wetlands commission. Uh, and we, uh, also obtained permission from the Planning and Zoning Commission. They approved the construction plans for, uh, the development. Uh, what happened from the early two thousands until later two thousand and ten was, uh, the owner and the applicant, uh, had to pursue an extensive, uh, renovation of the property. I'm going to get into the history of the property and I. I'm going to get into the history of the property, and I can start that. This is the former Ren's quarry, which is rather famous in town. It was subject to years of litigation, and it's an illegal mining site where there was a rock crusher who found a site where some of the cuts were as much as 80 feet deep to do the rock removal. If you want to use the term used and abused, this entire piece of property, most everything that you see on this map has been upset. It's been, the grades have been altered, the topsoil's been removed. And if you look at.
Oh, I gave the host to.
Oh, okay. Just to point out, what you see on the left-hand side of the map, the left bottom, that gray area, that's a pond, followed by it as a wetland, and that is entirely excavated. That was where, one of the areas where the gravel mining took place. Very bottom of this, what we're looking at is the survey map. Very bottom of the survey map, those wetlands there and waterworks network are pretty much left intact. There wasn't any disturbance of the empty. Anything that went into that area. As you get into the site, all of those wetlands that you see, the remaining wetlands that are showing, whether it's a pond or the wetlands, have all been impacted either by heavy equipment, by grading, tree removal. And I'll get into the biologist's summary of some of what has happened to some of those wetland areas, but as I said, this entire piece of property, especially what you see in the center of the map, has all been graded, the grades been lowered, there were some trees on it. Basically, it was turned into a desert as a result of the mining operation. It has restored itself to some degree, just time has been fine. However, most of what's growing out there now are invasive species, but there has been some return, some plant life has returned to it. So this is not in any way, shape of.
Go ahead.
In any way, shape, is this a natural wetland network? It's all been dispermed. And I encourage the commission, for those of you who haven't seen it, to look at it. It's hard to believe that this much land has been restored.
Is there access through to that?
Yes. Is there a gate? Yeah, if the commission wants to, there's a gate. The, what was originally approved was 90 units. Plans that we have resubmitted essentially are the same plans that were previously approved by the commission. The drainage features, the location of the road, the rates of the road, pipe sizes, all of that was approved previously by the commission. It was advised by our town engineer. This is the actual layout of the housing, and it has not changed since it was approved by Planning and Zoning. The previous approval, that one factor that we volunteered it to be an active adult community. It is documentation and condominium documents that indicate 55 and older and sales quality. Place in line with the Fair Housing Act. What has changed here, again, none of the layout has changed, while the units are no longer proposed to be active adult, they're proposed to be three-bedroom, single-family detached housing. So the only difference here is just in the wording as to the type of house that we're proposing. It's still 90 units. There is a clubhouse featured as part of these plans, and it's developed in recognition of the MFR regulation, or multifamily residential regulations. What we have done is we've split it up into two phases. See, the darker, the black houses are what we call Phase 1, and that's 45 units. And the green is what we're referring to as Phase 2. We're seeking approval of both Phase 1 and Phase 2. Reason why we have split it up is we are in, as far as our treatment plan goes, our subject disposal facilities, which are required to be approved. Daily flow is over 7,500 gallons a day. Our original approval was good to support 45 three-bedroom houses. We are currently in the design phase of, as we say, that's the size of the other 45. That's the, as I said, that is in par. I now probably be submitted to the DEEP for their initial review in the next month. The specific regulated activities, the construction of the 5,000 feet 24-foot blind roadway in a loop pattern. Grading and storm grading system underground, gallery, water mains, sewage force main and sort of gravity lines. It's also going to be water quality based structure. Perhaps whales, outlets for footing drains are going to be regulated out of the area. We're going, there is an existing dwelling on the property that is just into the regulated, about 10 feet of the house. That home is going to be legal. That's a summary of what the regulated activities are. Kevin, if you could go to S1. It's straddled over this, you can see. Turkey Roost Road is at the bottom of the draw here, and there currently is a road that serves the property that has been there. Well, I was able to trace it back pretty easily without trying too hard to 1952, and I believe the road was pre-World War II. The site that can use, again, I was able to confirm some aerial photos, at least back to 1952. Site was used as a gravel line, and this is the main access road to get into the rock hole, three, three single-family homes on the property that were all owned by the Smith family. So this water course crossing here exists. What we're doing is we're just going to be improving it, and instead of having a narrower paved driveway in the area, we're going to be expanding it to 24 feet, and we're going to be adding headwalls on both sides of the road to provide some support. The home that we're going to be removing is in the upper, almost, it's just, keep going, Kevin. Right there, as you can see, that encroaches into the area. This is one of our leaching areas, and as you can see, that house is just within the 100-foot setback area. Kevin, can we go to S2? Again, we have another crossing here. This crossing already exists. There's a culvert in place between straddle, these, those two wetland areas to the left and the right of the road. Again, as I said earlier, and I'm going to read some quotes from our environmental wetland specialist, indicating what the condition of those wetlands are. But again, this is another crossing that we're proposing. It already exists. It's existed for years. This is the main road to the, into the quarry for the removal of material. So this is a formidable road that is there today, and again, we're going to be improving it to support this community. Kevin, if we could go to O-S1, open space plan. Part of this regulation requires quite a bit of open space dedicated as part of the zoning process. See, we have several parcels of open space. The left-hand side of the property, the pond, has been, was excavated years ago. Those are passive and active open space areas. There's a total of 58 acres that's going to be set aside as open space, the bulk of it on the left-hand side of the property. That left-hand side of the property was where the gravel mining ended quite a while ago, so that area is pretty much revegetated itself and even worked to the point now where it, 10 years ago, was mostly just, it was just olive trees, and now they have been starting to get pushed out by more significant species. But this is a part of this zoning, is there will be 58 acres of open space. There's an extensive erosion control plan and in design of stormwater quality basins that has been submitted with the town engineer, and I don't believe at this point in time we've heard from the town engineer. But as I said, he reviewed this set of plans backing, you know, for the 2000 submitted. Just, I just want to read some, just to give you a flavor of what the wetlands and what we're talking about. We've submitted a wetland assessment and impact evaluation done by Davison Associates. Davison and predecessor company Environmental Planning Services has been supporting our office on. Very familiar property. Wetland 1, which is the wetland just to the left of the road, is not available. It shows evidence of creation, this is the creation of the wetland itself by heavy equipment. It has two minnels, one on the south side and one on the west side. So this is something, this is not a natural system. It's surmised that this was just a low area that was created by heavy equipment. Wetland 2, the entirety of this wetland has been altered by the former mining activities. This wetland area was completely disturbed from the mining activities, and possibly the wetland was entirely created as a result of mining activities which lowered ground and surface elevation, resulting in the interception of groundwater. Another wetland to be this large man-made pond, it's a well-defined shoreline and orderly wetlands. The shoreline is well-vegetated. The open water, this was all created with a drag line over, I believe, the 70s and the 80s. And Wetland 2C, it is presumed that the wetland shape and property resulted from the alterations that occurred from the mining operation. It was likely used historically as a settling basin. So that just gives you a flavor of what, what the wetlands are that we're dealing with here. It's not what we're used to seeing, where we see a natural maple swamp. That's why I encourage the system to commit to take a look at this site because it is unique. That concludes my presentation. We're not going to get through this anymore. I just want to be give the commission an overview of what is proposed, and I figure the commission's questions, and now a report of your results. Trigga further with some actions. And I do plan on having Eric Davison here to go over his report. I encourage you to read it, it's part of the application. It's pretty extensive. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I'm glad you recognize the need for the study that we're talking about and the consultant. Since this is not a natural wetlands, it's going to take a good, close look to understand what we're dealing with there. But I will, I have one other order of business here before we go to questions from the panel, and that's, we would ask you to authorize a time extension of 65 days to this application, so we have signed a secure consultant and get the study done. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, good. So let's start on the remote. Clark Gingras, questions at this point?
No questions. I just, I need to look at the environmental stuff. It's just a lot of stuff to try to take good.
It's a pretty big, pretty big request here. Okay, thanks, Clark. Commissioner Ryan?
Similarly, I look forward to a site visit. I know the area generally, but I have not been on-site before. I had read about, you know, the impacts to the, some of the habitats and endangered species, and that was a shortlist, and just acknowledging the letter that was written by a resident on Pinto Lane, it sounds like there was more that was, that was being mentioned, albeit just in the format of a letter, but I look forward to hearing what the report presents about the environment and seeing it for myself as well.
Mr. Lindstrom?
Do you have any recent photos, either aerial, of the upstate South?
The most recent photos are in the environmental report by Davison.
I might note that there's, there are marketing, there's a video online, the way this is being advertised for sale, that I found informative. There's a reference to a bass pond on there. Is that the pond down at the bottom?
I haven't seen the video.
Okay.
There's two ponds, and I believe there's a.
There's one. I think it was informative, because to drive up the hill, you can see quite a bit right there. Mr. Lindstrom?
You mentioned, or maybe you didn't mention anything about, is it city water, or are you going to have individual wells?
No, there will be city water. Bringing up that as one of the requirements of the zoning regulation.
Could you fill us in a little more on that, because I think you're going all the way to Elm Street to get this?
Yeah, but permanent active waterway down Elm Street.
How long a run is that?
I think 3,700 feet.
You don't want to go up to Wheeler? Sorry.
And would that run along Turkey Roost? That would disrupt Turkey Roost through there?
East side of Turkey Roost Road, they follow their normal protocol for putting in water mains.
Okay. When will that happen? Is that in the beginning of the project?
It would be one of the first things, because we couldn't get a CO on the first unit until we had it hooked up to water, so it would probably start with site work.
Let me ask another question along with that. Mr. Schultz, a traffic study is the purview of the planning and zoning?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so we'll address that here.
Likewise, this not being a, an active adult community going forward, is there, a curiosity of my own, whose responsibility is that to talk with the Board of Education, for example, and the possibility of additional influx of students and the impact there to the community as well? I know that's not wetlands, but.
Those are all planning and zoning related.
Planning and zoning, okay, understood. Okay, understood.
Mr. Stewart, comments?
Yes, I guess the waterline brings up one. And I don't know what the commission's history in that. But if obviously if they're digging, they're digging a pipeline along Turkey Roost, there's wetlands along Turkey Roost. So you may want to show that. So that's included in your, in your, in any approval?
Yeah, we don't usually do that because the public water companies are exempt.
I was unaware of that, but.
That's my understanding of the regulation.
The other question is, is your wastewater treatment facility? Talk to me about that for a second. Where is it? I can't tell from the plant where it's discharging to.
It's discharged to, Kevin. Phase one of sewage disposal. Go in on the entrance road and it's right, the whole long rectangle right there. Disposal area was phase one.
Is that the road right to the left of it?
Yeah, the road.
So that's, so it's an underground septic system, basically?
Large scale. It's underground peaching.
Ah, okay. Up surface. Waste water absorption system. Okay.
And that's the pond and that whole water port just below it, to the right of it.
The bulk of that pond is not on the rock. And I don't, that's been, it's dampened up.
Okay. Because you're not, you're not showing any pipe, I guess, that I can see that's going from the treatment system to the, to that sub.
That's part of our DDP package. I can provide it. We have a whole set of plans.
Well, you know, if you could just show it on the plants, because if you're going straight there, you're going through wetlands. If you're going, so I assume you're going to be going, it's going to be pumped on the road, I'm assuming?
Yeah. The treatment plant is just going.
Yeah, I see the treatment plant. I just don't see how you're going to get from there, from there to there.
It's going to be a four seater.
And then the last comment would be your, all your detention ponds, it didn't seem like back when it was originally done, they worked too hard to make them match the existing grading and the proposed grading. They're kind of hills and circles and squares and so.
I think when you see the site, you might.
Well, I know, but I mean, you do have some, you do have some grading going on. And I'd be looking for it to be a little, little match the proposed grading a little bit better than, than just a, you know, a circle. You know, because you're supposed to, you're supposed to, you know, make these things meander a little bit.
Only have four days.
Okay.
Are these wetlands flagged now?
Well, they were flagged last summer, not in fact, this is not, not 22. They were flagged in summer of 2021.
21.
I think you could still find most of our flags.
Okay. That would be important for the site visit. Okay. Any further questions at this point? Okay. And let's open this up for public comment. If there's anyone in the room here who'd like to make public comment, please come forward, identify yourself and give your name and address.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Joanna Badera. I'm a resident of 95 Pinto Lane. My husband and I received certification for that experience, so that's why I'm here. Several points of concern that we would like to be acknowledged if there is a report of this commission. First, we agree with the impact study on the environment. We are very concerned about the habitats removal of wildlife. We have beautiful wildlife and eagles, as it was indicated by my neighbor. So the environmental report is, is an important aspect that we are concerned about. Another point of concern is the infrastructure, the roads. So there are 90 single detached buildings. We assume there will be about 180 cars that will be added on the road. So we are concerned not only with the traffic, but also with the pollution that will be caused by the addition of those cars. Also regarding the educational system. In the case of an active adult community, that wouldn't have been an impact on the educational system. But considering that there will be, let's say, about two pupils per household, that would be about 180 students added to the educational system in town. And our concern is, are our schools prepared to take this large number of students?
We're the wetlands commission. We really can't, we can't.
I understand.
To, you know, schooling, traffic is not our, those also should be referred to the zoning commission.
I understand when Mr. Kelly asked the question about the education, I understood that it is something that can be brought up to this commission.
Now, that was just to clarify for each.
But feel free, you should be able to say whatever you want, but it may be for other commissions, the other commission to deal with that.
All right. So then I will move to my last point, that we are concerned with the impact of this new development on the adjacent properties. We are concerned that our property values will go down and that our taxes will increase. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the room who'd like to speak? Please identify yourself.
Good evening. My name is Laura Spence, 29 Partridge Drive. Excuse me. I'm a 16-year member of the commission. So I'm familiar with what you're going through. And I sat on the commission when this was originally approved. And I have to admit that both the town engineer and myself were quite new at this whole thing. We had not been presented with such a large, large project, nor were we familiar with alternative treatment systems. And this went through, had it gone through later on, it might have had a lot more examination involved with it. Couple of things. You also, also in your regs under the fees, you have the right under Schedule 19, Schedule A, page 9, page 31. Sorry, I'm reading this backwards. There is another fee structure that you can go with, just as a point of information. I highly recommend that before you walk it, you have it staked. So you know where the buildings are going to be. Because on such a vast property, it all looks the same. So unless you have your open areas staked and your buildings staked, it will help you a lot more to figure out exactly what it is that you're looking at. The paperwork, I did read through the paperwork. It still states that this is an application for an active adult community with two and three-bedroom houses. So the paperwork does not match what was presented in testimony. I also recommend additional examination on the alternative system. We haven't had any of these in town. We've had some recommended at times, but they haven't actually happened. And if I'm remembering correctly, the soil, most of the soil around was all sandy gravel, which is not appropriate for a tremendous amount of F1. It has to go through the right treatment. I'd like to believe that all of the soils have been tested properly so that it can accommodate and purify this F1 that will be going through it. And the last point, I believe, is for the, for the open space, I would ask that the commission ask for as much undisturbed as possible. Open space can be defined as many, many things, including manicured lawns. And that's not going to help improve the wetland. I realize that wetlands have been severely compromised over the years. But they can be improved with the proper allowance to pro back and have undisturbed areas around them. So with that, I thank you all very much.
Thank you. Did you want to speak, sir? Please identify yourself and give your address.
Hi, my name is Huiyoo Chua. I am 190 Turkey Roost Road. Chairman of the commission, appreciate the opportunity. My question is around transparency in the project. I live in Turkey Roost, and I didn't know about this except for a neighbor who got the letter. So if there are any requirements for, I think, the people who live on Turkey Roost to be notified, I'd like to look into that and understand what kind of transparency the neighbors were going to be affected again. I may be stretching the concept of ecological community. If ever, like, we humans who live on the road are part of that ecological community and would like to know that this is happening. That's it. Thanks very much.
Very good. And just, just for your information, there's two primary ways to notification, three. One is the notification that goes to the surrounding neighbors by mail. Then there is a sign that is posted for a public hearing, and it's also published in the newspaper. So we do have multiple ways to get that out.
Okay.
We have any more questions, comments in the room? All right?
Yes, one more, one more thing. We don't have a landscape plan. Is there?
Let's finish with the public seat presentation.
I saw it.
Anyone else on the line that would like to make public comment? Okay. You said landscape plan?
Yeah.
LP one. Over halfway. The big package over halfway. Ah, okay. It's just not on the front, on the front, LP, okay. I'm sorry. There is some for individual sites as well.
Is that, looking at that, is that the property line just across the top? Is it, is the, the development is pushed all the way to the top of the property?
Yeah, the development, that's, that's about an 80-foot cut between those units. And there is a very sharp rock face that rises to the top.
Ah, okay. That's a.
Is that a natural rock face, or is that part of the old quarry?
No, that's part of the quarry.
Okay.
It's not natural.
We'll see that when we walk it.
We'll see it.
Okay. Any other question, gentlemen, at this point? Okay. I think we'll ask for continuance.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, staff would like to put this on the October 12th meeting to give you an update on the consultant.
Okay.
It may be just a partial discussion, but we need to bring you up to speed on, on the consultant at this point.
Okay. So we'll continue this till the October 12th meeting. Move on then. Application to hearing determination. I W C 22-10, 467 485 Pepper Street. That is in your materials you've received. This is a proposed construction of outdoor storage in the regulated area. So Chris there, do you want to let Chris introduce us to this before we make our determination?
Yeah, let me allow us to speak.
Okay. Chris, you're muted there. Maybe everyone's muted.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me or no?
Yeah.
Very good. You can go ahead and identify yourself and just a little background here.
Don't worry. For the record, my name is Chris Palowski. I'm a civil engineer with Solely Engineering. Office is located in Monroe at 501 Main Street. I won't take up too much of your time tonight. We assume it's going to be heading towards a public hearing. So just a little bit of a project. A few years ago, I believe in 2017 or 18, we were before you for just 485 Pepper Street. That involved the retaining wall along the backside of the property and the construction of a associated covered storage bins and permitting of a construction yard where they're going to process and sell materials. Our client has now purchased the property next door. So we come before you to extend that permit and merge the lots into one. So it will be one cohesive operation. And now the storage regs, as you all are probably aware, have been modified in town. So instead of covered storage bins, we will now be moving to open storage bins across both properties within the regulated area. We will be doing some grading. There will be some retaining walls constructed. There will also be some water quality basins. And there is also an outdoor storage area in the rear of the piece where our client will be storing miscellaneous construction materials. As far as wetland impact, we will be filling, I believe it's a little less than 1,500 square feet of wetlands to relocate it on-site. So we will be recreating approximately three times that square footage. So I believe it's a little over 5,200 square feet. And we'll talk more about that, you know, when the hearing is scheduled. But just wanted to give you guys a little background on that. If you go out there, the site's pretty easy to walk. 485 Pepper is cleared and is, looks like a construction yard, if you will. And then 467 Peppers, the property immediately next door. It wasn't existing residence, and it has been existing residence for a number of years. There may be a couple of pieces of equipment on-site. I'm not too familiar, I haven't been out there recently. But that's pretty much an update from my end, so.
Hey, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
I just, a couple of comments on my review of materials for the commission. Forty percent of the property is wetlender upland review area. The proposed plan would impact 26% of the wetlender upland review area. And in reviewing the map plan, that outdoor storage at the back of the property has some real concerns to me. And then the recreation of the wetlands is a topic that we need to understand pretty clearly what they plan to do. So those are my comments. I will.
I can't say I can ever remember sitting on this, talking about getting rid of wetlands and creating it somewhere else.
Right.
We're always correcting things that were destroyed years before, you know?
Right. So this is something new that I think we need to better understand.
Yeah.
If I move, we go to a public hearing for the reason of potential damage to or impact the wetlands.
Second. Clark is the second? And how do we go? Anonymous. Okay, very good.
And Mr. Chairman, we're recommending October 12th.
October 12th.
And staff has recommended that the commissioners visit the site. There are two activities going on the site. One for Pepper Street reconstruction, property for stazing area. And they have their own project of doing a recycling facility, which this commission acted on and started the planning and zoning. And during the course of the construction, they did have some material go into the wetlands. So you need to see it at the site.
So as is in them planned.
But just be very careful, this is a very active site because of the Pepper Street reconstruction. reconstruction.
So the, the site is being used by the construction crews?
Yes, staging.
For, for no other?
Right. And there's a lot of hazards there, so it's okay.
Rick, if I may, just quickly, sorry, guys. So our client is the contractor for the Pepper Street Reconstruction Project. So it, Rick is correct, it is very active. There are trucks moving in and out. There is a lot of equipment around. So if you do see, you know, people and operators, just be aware of your surroundings, I politely ask. Thank you.
So we'll consider that continued, and then...
I call it is, I think that those visits should be after their operating hours, for sure, because, you know, they don't want to go in the middle of the day, probably. It works. Now, obviously, they have, we have to have representation, somebody to show us what's going on and, and walk us around at that construction site. We can't just show up here.
Right. So it should be a planned visit?
Yeah, Keith is correct. We'll, we'll schedule, we have two, three site visits going on now, so staff will coordinate it with the commission.
Very good. So we are moving on to our hearing determination. I'm sorry, our hearing deliberation for IWC 2022-09. That's the 912, 918, 926, 929 Main Street. The deliberation is open. Initial comments.
It sounds like they addressed everything from the last meeting.
I believe they did.
Yeah. Favorable recommendation from the town engineer. He's satisfied.
The, the one thing I, I had asked for, and I think Mr. Bjorklund answered, was the conservation easement. Like, maybe better term, maybe open space would have been good, but given the situation where they've lost their tenant, I can see where they'd be limited in something like that.
Yeah, they said they would revisit it.
Yeah.
A project of this size always gets modified, and then at that time you can revisit it.
Right.
No, no.
That's what I was wondering, I mean, would it be possible to, when they do get a tenant in, they're going to come in to develop this, like, okay, well, we'd like a conservation easement?
Right. Yeah. Or take a bunch of that land they own that's in the fine swamp and give it over to open space or something. There's some give and take in that for letting them go.
It's, it's a good goal to lock that area out.
Yeah.
Reserve it.
Yeah.
So now they're doing just a, a consent application because they don't have a, before they had it somebody and now they don't?
No, they, it was always a spec.
Oh, the spec, they're not going to start it? What are they going to do? You just said that if they had to come back in, if they get a tenant?
If they get a tenant. They'll modify their site plan, I'm sure.
Right. So right now, this is just like a, like a placeholder, a permit, saying you can do this? They don't plan on doing it until they get a tenant, is that correct?
That's why.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that the first time they were here. It was though.
I do know.
I'm sorry, it was before you got here. Dave Bjorklund had mentioned that.
I'm saying, but they spoke to us last meeting.
Right.
I don't remember hearing that specifically.
They volunteered, they volunteered at this time.
All right. No, I'm fine. I was just, just curious, I want to understand the whole situation.
Yeah.
All right.
I was under the impression that they were going to move forward with, with the plant, with the project without a tenant.
That's what I thought.
That was mine, that was my thought.
I heard that too.
But maybe they just meant they were moving forward with the application. Maybe I misinterpreted.
I, I took it that they're going to, they may do some, some site, site grading and everything, but...
Well, they're always entitled to do that.
Yeah.
Maybe they're just going to put the foundation there and wait for it.
I'll, I'll clarify that when I, when I contact the applicant.
In, in the past, we've had the, had the staff write, write a, you know, a draft motion. I don't know, can, can we, we need that at this point? Can we make a motion that says our standard conditions and then have...
We, we have the template in place.
Okay.
And that is going to be something that's going to be discussed with this commission, with the new staff person.
Okay.
And that's something that's very critical, because as you know, that, that resolution is critical. So we, we have the template.
Okay.
With your normal language.
Gotcha. Okay.
You want to look at it when you fine tune it down the road with the staff person, you want to feel comfortable with that.
So, so I'll make a motion, we approve the application, utilizing our, our standard conditions and our standard template.
We have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second.
But also, let's add that thing that we discussed when I got here about the gravel, because it wasn't up. So is the condition approved?
Okay.
I'll provide gravel to the back of the building.
Back of the building.
For maintenance.
Right.
Before we vote, I think PJ, you made the comment about trying to get more open space in the swampland area as part of this?
I think that's premature.
Premature?
Yeah.
But I mean, you can, you can indicate that it's the desire of the, of the IWC to have that area preserved in perpetuity.
Perfect language.
But then it is, are we kind of, like, they can't do anything in there?
That's directly by you.
Yeah, they have to come back. They have to come back.
No, I'm saying is that the, the area that's a swamp.
There's, there's swamp, and there is some land back there that backs up to the Houston Trail bed.
Right. And that's another indicator. They don't want to see that, they, the property of current, doesn't want to show that to a potential buyer.
Well...
Yeah.
That is it?
That's right.
Yeah. I just don't think that, it's not like it's dry land, you know, in the back that someone could eventually get to and build out or do anything. It's all wet, right? It's all wet.
Yeah.
So like, they can't go into anything there, period. Anyways.
I, I, I think...
Forever.
I think that's true, but I think that also to have that kind of space in the town's roster of official open space is of value to the town in a lot of ways.
And there's a land section that comes off the Houston Trail there that probably is not very accessible from the road, but that's the kind of thing that we could add to the open space.
Right. I believe that there are, you know, there are funding dollars and things like that out there that there, there's a value to having that in an official town.
This is a recommendation of the Plan of Conservation and Development to protect the wetlands, the high-quality wetlands and watercourses, and this clearly falls in that category.
Yeah. I think if they've pushed as close to the swamp as they can with the building, there should be some give and take in here with some of that land back behind it. Probably wouldn't get developed, but let's lock it up.
But they're going, they're going to save on taxes then, so I guess they would rely on top of it. Right? Pay tax on all your land, so if you take a couple acres.
Oh, let's, let's, let's put it in the letter that it would be, you had good language ready for...
Yeah, it's advantageous.
Or desire, yeah.
I'm going to amend my motion to include those conditions, or the, the one condition and the recommended language.
We have another second?
Okay.
Okay.
Second.
Aye.
Okay. And vote now?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous vote. Very good. So the next item on here is the minutes. I think we said we defer the minutes. They're still catching up here till the next meeting, which...
Okay.
They will defer it until the next meeting. Regulation Amendment Committee, no activity here? Public Outreach Committee, no activity?
I'm still in the meeting.
And...
Just go lie down and I'll...
Clark, Clark, you're still, you're still on. Thanks.
And Mr. Chairman, I just want to update the commissioners. We, I will be interviewing the third applicant for the wetland slash zoning enforcement official, and we'll have a recommendation for the first selectmen. If not by the end of this week, which is Friday, it'll be early next week. We, we need to move forward on that for the applications.
Right. We're good?
Okay.
And you have something to give?
Yes.
Something you were going to, you have a specific...
That was, that was the 7.6F that we had for Turkey Roost. The regulation. If you're familiar with what we were asking, Turkey Roost.
Still it out?
Oh, yeah. Very good. We are...
That was specific.
Chairman declares adjourned.